Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Clark, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
Alderperson yours is absent and excused.
We do have a quorum, so we will proceed with the meeting. I did want to mention that we noticed this afternoon that we had the wrong date on the agenda. I don't know if everyone saw the email from Bill. We were able to correct it on time and get the meeting notice posted in the appropriate places. So although your agenda here says January 25th, it is actually the February 8th agenda. We did talk to legal counsel and he was satisfied with the fact that we noticed it on time to get the notice out and posted in the appropriate places. So we will proceed with the meeting. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Anyone that wishes to speak? I'm not seeing any takers from the public. Anyone that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we will move on. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the January 25th council meeting. Those minutes were included with your packet. What's your pleasure? We have a motion by Ms. Ricky. Is there a second? Second by Mr. McGilvery. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And then motion carries and the minutes are approved. I have nothing under Mayor's business this evening because I believe Bill will probably be reporting what I was going to say. So Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, thank you. I have a few updates this evening. First, wanted to let everyone know about a couple of meetings and events that'll be coming up over the next couple of weeks. First, the Verona Road Business Coalition is holding its first annual Town Hall meeting this Wednesday, February 10th, from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. at Epic Systems. There's also an optional tour of the Epic Campus from 3:00 to 4:30. Program starts at 4:30 and will include an update on the Verona Road construction project and its impact on the community. And additional informational is available at the Verona Road Business Coalition website, along with a link to RSVP for the meeting. Coming up on February 15th, there will be a public informational meeting for the Dane County Bicycle Wayfinding Plan. Dane County Parks will be holding a public informational meeting on that plan, February 15th at 7:00 p.m. at the Lucier Family Heritage Center at 3101 Lake Farm Road in Madison. Dane County staff will be presenting an overview of the draft manual and collect feedback on the project. And again, additional information is available on the Dane County Parks website. And then a third meeting coming up will be held on March 3rd. It's a kickoff meeting for the Madison Area Transportation Planning Board, MPO, Regional Transportation Plan. The MPO is going to be holding three public kickoff meetings in early March. One of those locations will be held in the city of Verona at our fire and EMS station at 101 Lincoln Street. Again, that meeting is March 3rd. It's from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. There'll be information on the plan, opportunity for people to weigh in and provide comments on the issues, the goals and the vision for the plan. And there's also an interactive plan website at MadisonArea RTP.com. And then finally, I wanted to provide an update on the city's urban service area amendment. The Capitol Regional Planning Commission had recommended approval of that application at their meeting in January. On February 5th, last Friday, the Department of Natural Resources received the final staff analysis from CARPSY and their resolution. And the information that we've received from the DNR is that they're anticipating that they would issue a final letter in about two weeks, assuming that there are no additional issues that are discovered as they go through their review. And the DNR has been involved in this process from the beginning, so we're not anticipating additional issues from the DNR. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns this evening? Not seeing any. Thank you, Bill. Next, we have the engineers' report. Mr. Mompas, please.
There's nothing to report at this time due to the winter weather. There isn't really anything being built. I would expect in the next 30 days that the bridge project would get going. And from there, we will see what Epic manages to do. I know that they've got some stuff that they'd like to go into. My intent is that next month, if there is construction, I'll send out a report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mompas? Seeing none, thank you. We will move then to committee reports. We'll begin with the Plan Commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda item 9A1, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 16-869, zoning text amendment to amend section 13-1-360 relating to the purpose procedural regulations and posted notice.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment will require public notification signs to be placed on properties that are required to have public hearings due to zoning requests, including conditional use permits, planned developments, rezonings and variances. The sign size, location and content will be subject to the interpretation of the zoning administrator. The Plan Commission discussed the city's public notification process at the December 7th, 2015, and January 4th, 2016 meetings, and directed staff to draft an ordinance amendment to acquire public notification signs. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on February 1st, 2016, and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment. If the zoning ordinance amendment is approved, the implementation will take a few months. The staff will need to work with a sign manufacturer to create signs. Just simplify a little bit. Basically, if there's going to be a public hearing, we'd like to put a sign that would direct people to the city website or the city planner to ask any questions if they had any. I believe Mr. Diaz was the part of this in the beginning.
He was. Are there any questions, Mr. or comments? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thanks. I guess I gotta speak then. I was just gonna say, I think this is a really fantastic thing. You know, we're never going to have a perfect system where everyone knows, you know, everyone in the neighborhood knows about a development, but I think this is another step, kind of on the road, to making sure that we do our part to make sure that people know what's going on in their neighborhood and we're giving the public due notification that they deserve on city projects. So I think this is wonderful.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Sarah, anything to add? I saw you brought the sign in.
I brought my sign. I'll show it. So this is just an example of how a sign may or may not look. This is a sign from Economwalk. They have a similar ordinance in place where it requires notification signs on properties. I think ours would be a little more simplified, probably not as bright. Most likely maybe a white background with black lettering. But this is approximately the size and approximately just in general how it's gonna look.
Thank you, Mr. Sarah. Ms. Ricky, please.
I would suggest that you do make it fluorescent colors because then it'd be less likely for people to say, "I did not notice it."
Honestly, I think you're gonna get that regardless, but we are gonna, our Director of Public Works and myself will speak with a sign company and kind of get feedback on that, too. One of the ideas was black and orange. I don't think that'd be appropriate because it probably would be confused with the school district, but we'll take a look at the colors and try to make it visible, but not maybe, maybe not as screaming as loud as this. So we'll see if there's a balance in between both.
Thank you, Mr. Sarah. Any other questions or comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve ordinance number 16, number 16-869. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. That motion carries. Mr. Linder, anything else in the Plan Commission?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. We will move then to the Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in amount of $1,740... Wow. A complete breakdown here.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. The way of explanation, just two of the larger items because we have two pretty good-sized items from this month's bills. First one being the Board of Commissions for State Trust Fund Loan Payment, $192,466.35. And the second one being to the Bond Trust Services Corporation for our debt service payment, which is $1,079,434.38.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Any questions for the Finance Committee or city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills, bills in amount totaling $1,741,547.54. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries and the bills are paid. Mr. McGilvery.
Thank you. Under item 9B2, I'll make a motion to approve the change orders for the fire and EMS facilities project contingent upon the staff's approval of the work performed underneath those change orders.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery.
Thank you. The city utilized the construction manager process for the construction of the fire and EMS facility. With this process, Tri-North Builders served as the construction manager and the city holds individual contracts with the contractors for 23 bid items. A final change order has been prepared for each contractor that includes all the adjustments from the original contract amount. The net amount of the contractor change order is a reduction of $1,906,198.4. This includes reductions for direct change order or direct purchases that the city made. It also includes adjustments for the value engineering savings, selected alternative items and adjustments to the contract scope for modifications during construction and additional soil undercutting and fill. With the change orders and anticipated costs for the construction manager, the construction portion of the project is projected at $9,667,069... I cannot believe I'm having this much trouble with the numbers tonight. The current total project estimate, which includes architectural fees, engineering services and furniture and equipment purchases, is $10,638,334. This includes the anticipated final cost for Tri-North Builders and some remaining purchase, equipment purchases. The current project is higher than the revised post-bid estimate for the project of $10,611,314, but is within the amount of the $10,700,000 included in the city's 2015 adopted budget. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Questions, comments? Or we also have the chief here. Chief, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Just if you'd like me to report on some of the issues we've had and how things are going, I'm more willing to do that if you...
Sure, go ahead.
First off, I'd like to thank everyone for the facility. It is a very beautiful facility. It will serve us well into the future for both fire and EMS, once we get it finished, which is our problem, is getting it finished. I would probably say that probably the biggest reason we've had some, a lot of the difficulties we have, is because we had to move into the facility before it was finished. There was no way around that. We had to tear down the old station completely to finish. So that caused some issues for the workers doing the work and things and caused some confusions and stuff. So I guess we're partially to blame for some of this stuff, but for example, our, the concrete in our apparatus bay floors is, did not finish to how we would like to have seen them done. They didn't turn out as well as we thought, so we're working with the contractor to figure out a solution for that. Other concrete throughout the station, the floors has cracked and, in my opinion, looks rather old already for a new facility. So we're hopefully working out some solutions for that. Our garage door installation, the crews that installed our garage doors did a fairly poor job of that. I don't know if it was their first time ever installing doors or what, but they took those bifold doors, which were very expensive doors, and did not handle them very well and scratched them up. So now they need to be touched up and painted. And I've told them that those are $25,000 doors apiece and they're gonna look like $25,000 doors before they get paid for those things. So they got some work to do there. We also found in the back bays just recently where we parked the command cars, there's regular roll-up garage doors in there. One of them, the one that I use, which is, sees the most use, is not installed very well. The chain is running on a sprinkler pipe and is gonna break through the sprinkler pipe sooner or later. Then I'll have an automatic car wash where I park. And they also did some welding on the tracks and got welding slag on the windows and ruined the glass windows. So that company has caused us a lot of, caused me a lot of headaches and we, they're gonna have to get it straightened out. The classroom floor that slab meets foundation walls there, and there's a difference in the floor. If you're walking towards the back of the classroom, you could trip there because of the unevenness of the floor, so we need to address that. The hose tower, we have a hose tower for hanging our hoses and stuff, but the designer did not include the hoist to raise the hose to the top of the tower, so we have the additional cost of finding a hose hoist for that. I should say there have been numerous things that were design-related errors and quality of workmanship errors all the way through the project, especially some of our biggest problems were with electrical mechanicals and stuff like that. For example, we had a meeting with them for an hour and a half to talk about communication antennas on the station. When it came time, I saw they were putting the roof on the hose tower and I asked where were my antenna mounts. I was told there aren't any. And that resulted in us spending $15,000 to put a radio tower up because they didn't include them in the design of the building like we talked about. You know, things are... Another example, there's no snow guards on the steel roof. It's an additional cost that we're having to pay out now because it was left out of the design process. They moved the countertops, all the countertops in the downstairs kitchen were all installed at ADA heights. And it's not gonna be used for, you know, public's not gonna be using that kitchen, just gonna be fire staff. We don't have any ADA firefighters, so we've asked, they had those counters raised up, which they've done, but then they neglected to move the outlets up. So now the outlets are below the countertops and they gotta figure that out. Just a lot of design things going on. Concrete and part of the deal, things being done different times. The concrete in the apparatus, not the apparatus bay, the gear lockers in the dirty bathrooms, they tell me they sealed those floors. They were all burnished like the apparatus bay floors, but those floors were put in before the burnishing was even done, so there's no sealer on those floors, so we're trying to get that straightened out. You know, like I said, there's, they had to pull out a couple of the windows in the classroom. They were frosting up really bad. They found out that one of the contractors didn't put in the proper seal on the bottom of the window, so they fixed two of them now and so you're gonna see how that goes. And then you gotta come back and do the rest. It's just kind of a comedy of errors almost. It's been a very frustrating process. You know, once we moved in, a lot of the contractors thought, "The big push is over. We can relax a little bit," and left and went to other projects because this was going long and they had other projects that it was impacting on. And getting them back to finish the punch list has been a real, real trial trying to get that done. Like I said, if we could just get it finished, we even hired Vogel to come in and fix things that, you know, that wasn't their deal, but we hired them just to fix it, to get it done. And they show up with one guy and he's doing his best, but he's one guy and he's got a lot of work to do. And sometimes we even help him out because one guy can't lift a cabinet very well, so our guys are helping him lift cabinets and stuff. It's just, it's, it's, it's very, been very, as Mr. Burns related, it's been very frustrating trying to get this project done and get people in there and get it, just get it finished. I have people calling and emailing me almost daily, certainly weekly, asking for tours of the station. And I can't schedule any because if I have a tour in there and all of a sudden workmen show up and start tearing stuff apart, you know, that's not gonna go over very well. So we can't bring tours in and stuff. Vogel's been there pretty much this week and he's making some progress. I'm just hoping to really get things going here so we can utilize the station the way it's meant to be. And like I said, it's a beautiful facility. Once we get it done, it's gonna be outstanding. I mean, it's just so much better than what we have. Our capabilities are so much better. Our response times have been reduced greatly because of our ability to staff people there overnight and we're very, very thankful for what we have. We have some issues here we have to get through, but overall, it's a phenomenal facility and it's gonna serve us well.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? Mr. Diaz?
What's the timeline for this actually being done?
I honestly don't know. You know, we're trying to work with that, trying to figure out an open house and until we hear from the contractor with the concrete floor and apparatus bay, that's the big gorilla in the room there is, what are they gonna do with that? That could take a lot of time to solve. And other things, you know, like the apparatus bay doors touching up the paint, they can't do that until it warms up and, you know, the weather gets warm enough that they can actually paint outside and things like that.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I find your comments really disappointing. I'm not blaming you in any way. I know the city went through a lot of effort to try to save some costs. I don't know all of the details of the efforts that we went through, but it's, it's, you know, it really disappoints me, to say the least, and our fire station is a very expensive building for us to not at least have somebody to point our finger to to say, "Fix this," and that you and your people are having to spend your time doing it. It really, it really does bother me quite a bit. And I appreciate you sharing it with the council. If there's anything I can do to help, let me know.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I am hardened to hear about increased capabilities and improved response time because that is ultimately the main point and that if we get better response time, I mean, that could even be a saved life, not to mention, you know, preventing issues to property. I guess I wanna make one point, though, is that I think we need to do a root cause analysis and see, figure out where in the process we went wrong. And whether it's, it's the contractor, the type of system that was used, our plans, our, whosoever fault it was, I think, I think it's really important to figure out what went wrong so we cannot make the same mistakes again.
I can tell you, certainly the first thing that went wrong is the steel was delivered at least six weeks late, and that pushed everything. It had a cascading effect and that was devastating to the project.
Mr. McGilvery, please.
Since one of the things that we reviewed at Finance was a change order involving, potential change order involving the superintendent fee by Tri-North, I wonder if either you, Chief, or Mr. Burns can tell me if we had full-time supervision on the project even during that six weeks of lag? Yeah, could you first address that one and get to the next one?
Certainly, absolutely, yes. Tri-North Superintendent was there pretty much full-time, constantly. There was very few times that I was, that I would look for him and couldn't find him. He was there very, very regularly all through the project until the, near the end, and then it was very spotty. You know, he was, he'd be there for a couple hours once in a while, but there wasn't a whole lot of work going on at that time. Should've been, but there wasn't. You know, all the contractors had moved on to other things. There was still a lot of things that needed to be done, but not enough for him to be, to be paying him to be there eight hours a day at that point. But during the main part of the construction project, he was there constantly. I had no problem with him not being around.
But it kinda brings me to the, my next question, which would be for Tri-North, whenever we get Tri-North in front of us, you know, if they're asking for this substantial, this pretty substantial fee associated with the superintendent being there in addition to what he was initially supposed to be there. If you're telling me he wasn't and things weren't getting done, and that's, that's kinda what the superintendent does, he drives that bus. I mean, and if he's not there, not seeing things aren't done, you know, I understand I get pulled between multiple projects all the time, but if it's a full-time supervision, then you gotta get that to the end, so...
In the end, I felt, I felt left out to dry, basically, by him. I would like to have had him say, "Okay, I'm not gonna be here full-time." I mean, I totally get that, but tell me, "I'm gonna be here for eight to 10 every day or every other day," or just give me some kind of a schedule instead of just showing up here and there. And, you know, there was times where we didn't see him for a couple weeks and then he was there for several days in a row. Just, he wasn't letting us know what was going on. So I felt like I all of a sudden became the superintendent of the project because all the people that would come into work occasionally were trying to find me and find out, "What do I gotta do?" and stuff. And I'm a fire chief. I'm not a construction supervisor. You know, I don't know that stuff that well.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I just wanted, wanted to give a couple thoughts, and we've had a lot of discussions, Chief and myself and others, about what has gone well, what hasn't gone well with this project, and just some initial thoughts to respond to Mr. Diaz's comment. You know, I do want to reiterate what the chief said, that overall, we have a very good building as far as the design, the functionality, and ultimately the quality of the building. It's a very high-quality construction that will serve the community for a long time. There have been frustrations, especially with a lot of the punch list items and trying to get these punch list items completed. A couple of the things that I see as kind of lessons learned or issues with the project, I think one of the issues is the fact that this construction was set up in such a way that, that we were gonna be moving out of the old apparatus bay, moving into the station before it was completed. Likely unavoidable, but certainly that caused more challenges than you would if you're just building a new building and you can completely leave the contractors to do the work and finish it before you move in. Early in the process, there was a decision to issue the bids for these 23 bid items in two separate packages, and that was done because of the timing and the time of the year and a desire to try to get some of the initial bid packages approved and get started before the fall weather, fall and winter weather would come. In hindsight, I think that caused a lot of confusion with separating the bid packages. Items, Chief referred to different design items. I think it would've been a simpler, smoother process to do one complete set, do a single bid letting. And in the result, because of the delays with the steel, the advantages that we had of doing the separate bid packages were largely lost as we had delays with the steel contractor. The issue is with the steel. I don't know how that completely could've been avoided. We, by state law, are required to go with the low bidder. Our bidder for the steel, which was Findorf, had a subcontractor steel supplier that I think unfortunately was just not up to a job of this scale. And I think ultimately, they had financial issues going on with that subcontractor and Findorf needed to go to a different steel supplier to get some of the items that were needed for the station. That certainly caused delays, and I think the delays there, we had contractors for the other trades that had lined up to follow a certain schedule. As the steel got delayed, that pushed things back on their timeline and then it was difficult to get things scheduled. Despite that, I will say from my perspective, I think that during the bulk of the construction and the push to get fire and EMS in the station, that that was able to be accomplished at about the timeline that we followed. I think most of the scheduling issues have happened after that, after the move-in, trying to get things completed for the move-in and complete, or, excuse me, completed for the punch list items. Couple other challenges, and one we talked about at the Finance Committee, is that we had a change in our project manager with Tri-North right after the bid packages went out and as construction was starting. I think that, again, added to the confusion and some of the difficulties in the project and something I think in the future, we would ensure that we write into any of our agreements that if there's a change in the personnel, that the city has the ability to sign off or be involved in that, and that's something, looking back, that we should have had as well. I think part of the issue, too, with the architectural team, certainly they've done a lot of great projects and came very highly recommended. They were very busy at the time that this station was being done, with a lot of stations being done in other facilities. And I think the combination of the change in staff and our construction manager with Tri-North, plus just the volume of activity going on there, led to some communication issues that, you know, again, I think that that's something that if we were looking in the future, we would look at how we structure those agreements and maybe have more of a structured process as far as time and onsite meetings during that initial process in order to try to avoid that. I've talked with people from other communities, other administrators that have done other facility projects. Everyone has had issues with their stations. I've heard stories of different communities with different methods. I don't think for a facility the size, you're ever gonna completely avoid those, but I will agree, they're having a lot of frustrations. And I think as we continue to wrap up this process, we'll definitely look at following up on that, putting together some ideas and recommendations down in writing of, for future facilities or future projects, lessons learned and how to try to avoid some of these issues in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Linder, please.
We use the construction manager process for this. Would you recommend in the future we do a general contractor instead? That gives you that one person to, you know, point your finger at, so to speak.
Mr. Burns?
I don't know an answer to give you today of whether or not I would recommend that. There were certainly challenges going with that method that we've been talking about tonight. Having talked with people that have gone with a general contractor method, they've had issues where, without having your own independent observer or superintendent onsite, that they found after the fact that there were things that were not done from a quality standpoint to where they would like to have had them. So I think there are advantages to the method we use. There are disadvantages. I guess that's something as we... I guess that's something as we complete the project and kind of look at our overall review, I would consider that. Another option that perhaps would be something we'd look at in the future is go with a general contractor and hire an owner's representative to be onsite, so you're still having one general contractor rather than holding 23 separate contracts, but you still have an independent person onsite reviewing things. That may be more expensive depending on the person and how much time you have involved. Again, there's pros and cons with anything. I think we're seeing some of the challenges of coordinating, holding all of these 23 contracts and you know, again, like I said, I think during the bulk of the construction with having the full onsite superintendent, generally things went pretty well. The issue has been after that person was no longer onsite and maybe that's something that would be a lesson for the future, that even during the punch list process, even if it's more expensive to have somebody more regularly onsite, perhaps some of these things could have got done a little bit more quickly if we had incurred that cost. That's something we'll consider, I guess, to answer your question.
Go ahead, Ms. Linder.
You know, I'm sure there's more things to kind of learn from it, but it sounds like, I mean, you hit a lot of them today. It'd be good to keep that information, to pass it on to the next, you know, construction project, you know, who knows who, how many of us will be around when that happens and it's good to learn from that stuff. And I wanted to add, I agree with Alderman Touche that it's been disheartening to hear the list, you know, I knew you had had problems, but it seems like, I don't know, the list is getting a whole lot smaller. It sounds like you were talking about the kitchen three months ago, four months ago, you know, you walked me through there, so this feels like, from my standpoint, it looks like not a lot is getting completed on the punch list, maybe, maybe there is some, it's some big ones, but I am also glad that it is producing, like, like the, Mr. Diaz said that, you know, it is providing faster service and which is the main reason for the facility and it's better service and so the end goal, it sounds like we met, but we got some issues yet that, you know, hopefully we'll get it solved soon.
Thank you. Other comments, Mr. McIlroy please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quickly, if you could go back to the part, I think you said that the turnout area was not burnished, was not sealed?
Correct. The, one of the first, that's all on the spancrete, so that was one of the first concrete that went down, was when they put the spancrete down. They did the concrete in the gear locker storage area and also one of the bathrooms in that area that we call the dirty bathroom because they can go in there with their gear on because it's not uncarpeted or anything. And they'd put that concrete down and then after, after that was down, it took us a while before we decided what we were going to do for the ceiling of the apparatus bay floors to where we decided to do the burnished look. Those floors were done long before that and I asked the construction manager supervisor, I said, well, when does this floor get sealed? And he says, it was sealed. I said, well, when? I says, I just poured the concrete on there. They did, he says, it was burnished just like the rest of the floors and I said, no, we didn't decide the burnishing until long after that concrete was poured. So you mop the floors, you put water on those floors, the water just disappears, it goes right, it's absorbed into the floor. There's definitely no sealer on there, so it's something that's got to get, end up getting addressed somehow. I'm going to guess, probably end up, excuse me, putting some type of sealer on the floor in general to cover up the flaws would be my guess and that would also entail those rooms as well.
Yeah, I would imagine it'd be, there's a fair amount of gear and, you know, lockers and things in there, it's going to be problematic to go back in and burn it in now.
And remember also, you know, the concrete floors in Apparatus Bay are all in-floor heat, so there's no going in and tearing the concrete out of there or anything, it's, we're going to have to make what's there work.
Yeah, it'll be a scheduling problem too, I mean, you have to be able to turn out 24/7, so you'll have to move that stuff in order to, that, they'll have to be pretty specific, I think, with you, when that's going to happen.
Yes.
Now, was that, was that Findorf who did those or was that under a different contract?
Yeah, that was Findorf as well.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Diaz.
Thank you. Is there at any point where we can just hire somebody else to do some of this stuff? Like if we're talking about this five months from now, can we just hire, I mean, I suppose at some point we'll have to, but is there some sort of cutoff or timeline when we'd want to find other contractors to finish it?
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I think that is an option if we get to that point. We also have bonds for all of the contractors, so if need be, we do have the ability that we could bring another contractor in and either hold that from the retainage or pursue the bond. I think with the concrete floors, there's not an agreement at this point of what is the best solution, you know, as the chief mentioned, you know, tearing it out and starting over is not a practical option, so I think we need to decide what needs to be done, tell Findorf what we want to be done, direct them to do that. If they're not responsive, then that may be an option.
Thank you. Mr. McIlroy.
Thanks, just one last comment. I, you know, I would say at this point, I wasn't aware that your list was this big either, but at this point, I think you have to give Tri-North a date certain and the contractors that we're waiting on a date certain and they have to meet that and if not, you have to pursue the other option and they need to understand that you're going to do that. That's just the way it's going, it has to be. I mean, I think Jack said it, seven months? That's, that's a long time. And really, from a, from a construction point of view, I don't know too many contractors who like doing punch lists a month after people are in a building, much less seven months, because you end up, you end up fixing things that get damaged because you're just in a building, so I mean, I'm struggling to understand why it's been seven months, that just seems crazy.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I agree with some of the things, it has been a long time. I would remind everyone that the intention was to move in before construction was completed, so some of that time was planned, that there were going to be things that needed to be completed after the move-in. Some of the items like the kitchen, for example, there were decisions that were made late in the process to modify the counter heights, we were looking at options for dishwashers and what counter height was needed for that. There was a change for the mock ambulance room, that was a decision late in the process. So certainly there are some items like the, the concrete flooring and that certainly should have been completed a long time ago. There are other items where there are legitimate reasons why things were happening later in the process, but I do agree, I think we are at the point where there has been work in progress made over the last few weeks, but for the remaining items that we have right now, I think we need to sit down with the architect and the construction manager, come up with our solution, come up with a date certain and ask everyone to follow those dates. I think we're at that point now.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any other questions, comments? Any desire to have Mr. McIlroy read those numbers again?
Yeah, I can.
And not seeing any questions or comments, the motion before you is to approve the change orders for the fire EMS facility contingent upon approval by the appropriate staff people prior to payment. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McIlroy please.
Thank you. Under item 9B3, I will make a motion to deny an excessive assessment for property owned by Walgreens for the 2015 tax year.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlroy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. McIlroy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city received a claim of assessment, excessive assessment for the 2015 tax year for two parcels owned by the Walgreen Company for the property located at 104 North Main Street. This property has an assessed value of $2,794,000 for 2015, which was based on a prior settlement the city reached with Walgreens. The current claim asserts that the fair market value of the property was no higher than $2 million and is seeking a refund of property taxes in the amount of $18,203.68 plus interest. There's currently a lawsuit pending between the city and Walgreens regarding a claim of excessive assessment for the 2014 tax year. Attorney Amy Trupke from Stafford and Rosenbaum is representing the city for that case. Ms. Trupke's recommendation is to deny the claim of excessive assessment filed for the 2015 tax year. And yes, you did hear that correctly, we had an agreed assessed value of $2,794,000 and now we have a contention by Walgreen once again that the property is valued no more than $2 million.
Any additional questions or comments? Just mainly for those that are watching at home, this is not specific, well, the claim is specific to the city of Verona, but this is something that Walgreens has been doing around the state. It's not, you know, just happening here in Verona, just wanted to make that point. Any questions or comments? If not, the motion before you is to deny the claim of excessive assessment for property owned by Walgreens for the 2015 tax year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there anything else from Finance?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McIlroy. We will move then to Public Works Soar and Water. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9C1, I'm making a motion to approve a professional services agreement for construction services for the community park parking lot reconstruction and park lane parking lot construction project.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McIlroy, Mr. Touche?
This agreement is with AECOM for the construction-related services for the community park and park lane parking lot improvements. This agreement will provide construction administration, which includes site visits, reviewing applications for payment, reviewing shop drawings and preparing contract change orders, contract closeout documents and construction staking. Services will be performed on a time and materials basis not to exceed $22,600.
You've heard the explanation, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Diaz please.
Thank you, I just want to say, I plan on voting against this, not because I think it's a bad thing to do, but I'm still not convinced that the park lane parking lot is a good idea.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the design engineering services agreement with AECOM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
That motion carries and Mr. Diaz and Ms. Doyle voting no. And the motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Under item 9C2, I'm making a motion to approve resolution R-16-003 approving a first amendment to the lease agreement with the Madison Cellular Telephone Company, U.S. Cellular, for the cellular antenna facility at the city's north water tower.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Touche please.
The city of Verona has a lease agreement with the Madison Cellular Telephone Company for the location of antenna facilities on the city's north water tower. U.S. Cellular is seeking to modify the antenna equipment on the water tower to take advantage of new technology. These modifications include the addition of three remote radio units. The city and U.S. Cellular have negotiated a first amendment to the lease agreement to allow for the desired modifications. As part of the amendment, the rent will increase by $225 per month and U.S. Cellular would agree to reimburse the city for its costs for attorney and engineering review related to the changes in the amount not to exceed $5,000.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments? Mr. McIlroy?
I just wanted to mention that I thought the staff did a nice job of renegotiating this, we had a chance to talk about it a little bit at the committee level and the initial agreement would have allowed 12 antennas at the site, it had six, so the RRUs that were added were slightly different than the antennas and the original agreement and Mr. Burns did a good job of going back to U.S. Cellular and negotiating that additional, I think, what was it, 75 bucks?
75 bucks.
For RU, so I appreciate that and good work.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional questions, comments? Mr. Touche?
RRUs actually bring the computing power that's normally on the ground up into the towers, so they're not actually antennas, they're computing units.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? If not, the motion that's before you is to approve resolution R-16-003. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there anything else from Public Works Soar and Water?
That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Next under New Business, we have discussion and possible action regarding a request for proposals for the Matt's House property located at 101 North Main Street. Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Yeah, thank you. Back on January 11th, the council met as a committee of the whole to discuss the Matt's House property located at 101 North Main Street. At that meeting, the consensus of the members was direct staff to prepare a request for proposals, to solicit proposals for the use of the property and the committee of the whole had indicated that the preference was to consider proposals that included the rehabilitation of the historic building. Staff have prepared a draft RFP based on examples used by other communities and the draft RFP requests information for those submitting a proposal on the team members and their qualifications, the proposed use of the property, the budget financing and schedule for the project. It also establishes evaluation criteria and lays out a draft timeline that if approved would allow for approximately four weeks for proposals to be submitted and the process by which the proposals would be evaluated and then eventually come back to the city council for consideration and potential word of the RFP. Before proceeding with the RFP, staff wanted to give the opportunity for the council to review the RFP, look at the items and the evaluation criteria and provide any feedback to staff on the RFP, those criteria and the review process. And Mr. Sayer and myself are available to answer questions and to take any feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Questions, comments? Mr. McIlroy please.
Real quick, you said it's a four-week process, did that include the, your opportunity to review or?
The timeline, the schedule is on page six of the document that's in our packet.
I guess that would be my question, is whether or not requesting, you know, people send in proposals, giving them four weeks and then also allowing you enough time to review them, if four weeks is necessarily enough.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, the schedule is included on page five, that the four weeks would be for people to prepare the proposals, it would not include the review time, so that the tentative timeline that we laid out, if there's approval tonight, the RFP would be released later this week, potentially as early as tomorrow, have a deadline of proposals of March 11th, we'd have an initial review of the proposals completed by March 21st, identify a shortlist for potential interviews, interview candidates or proposals the first week of April and then target bringing it back to council on April 11th. The review process is of course going to depend on how many proposals we get back in, so we may not need to shortlist them if we only have one or two proposals that come in, but generally we wanted to lay out a process where people would have about a month to submit and then there'd be a month to review and prepare recommendations for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Questions, comments? Mr. Diaz please.
Thank you, I just want to say, I like the criteria, I think they look good. I just have one question, how is this going to be publicized that we're looking for an RFP or making the RFP?
Mr. Sayer please.
Sure, we'll post it on the website, so we'll actually create a webpage for that, we'll link it off the website as well, we'll put it in our newsletter if that's possible. I also have a list of people that have contacted me over the past approximately year who have expressed interest in a variety of fashions on the property, so I'm just curious what's going on with it, so I'm actually interested in looking at a project on there, so I will email that out to those people as well too. So that's basically the initial intention of posting it online, having it out there in word of mouth. I think most people already, at least in this area, know about it. I will be sending it off to Cunningham, who helped prepare that report for us. They did mention, after they completed the last draft report, that they do work with a lot of contractors and individuals that may be interested in as well too, so they did offer to send it off to the people they've worked with in the past as well, so yeah, I think it's mostly going to be based upon who have contacted me in the past, people that, you know, I've identified as well that just might be interested in it too, but that's the general idea right now. We possibly could post it on the League of Wisconsin municipalities, we could post it on a few of our websites as well too, but Mr. Burns and I haven't talked in great detail about how far we want to send this off. I think it's a, it's a smaller property from a development standpoint, so I think the pool of people interested, interested in this type of development isn't going to be as large as your typical, hey, we have a three-acre site downtown that's clean, ready to go, so, but we'll get it out there as much as we can and we'll do our best.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Other questions or comments on the RFP? If not, we are looking for action on this evening. Are there any motions at this point? Mr. Linder?
I guess just to make a motion to approve the request for proposals for the Matt's House property located at 101 North Main Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Touche. Questions or comments on the motion? This is on the request for proposal, which is before you. for proposal, which is before you. Questions or comments? Not seeing any, all those in favor of approval of the RFP, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion carries. Ms. Clark, do we have any operator licenses this evening?
Elijah Linderood and Madison Jedelo for Francois Oil.
You've heard the applicants, what's your pleasure?
An approval?
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Touche. Any questions on the applicants? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion carries. We are down to Agenda Item Number 11, which is announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening? Do we have any announcements this evening? Seeing none. Last order of business is a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Reiki. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.